We will open our meeting with the pledge. If I can ask us to represent the members of the pledge.
... in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we begin with our administrative remarks. Please start off your job.
Great, thank you, good evening. I am happy to announce that our fully revised policy manual has now been running in Board Docs. This is the culmination of a multi-year effort of revising each of the policies and now they are fully integrated within Board Docs. So I'd like to thank our Policy Committee for their diligence throughout this process and of course Mrs. Patty Lawler for her meticulous attention to detail and her perseverance in seeing it all through. Second comment has to do with public comments made at our last meeting regarding Policy 7220 and 7222. So before the fire alarm went off, we had a community member share feedback on these two policies. Please note that we planned on sharing those, that feedback during our regularly scheduled Policy Committee this afternoon, but two other policies which were already on the agenda just longer than we thought. So at our November meeting, we will look at the feedback and then the Policy Committee will examine the feedback, decide what we want to put forward for your approval after that. And finally, we have our first Professional Learning Day planned for this Thursday. This day was designed by the District-wide Professional Learning Team using survey data and feedback from staff from last year. One note about this, based on my recommendation last winter when we were developing the calendar for this year, I recommended this date because it was similar to the year before, but I've missed that the PSATs were also this week. So I'll make sure that when we have that calendar, when the calendar is developed for next year, the PSAT dates are there and we make sure it's not during the same week. But with that said, we're looking forward to Thursday, which is a date planned and run by our own staff utilizing our internal expertise. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Norenzen?
Good evening. So I'd like to share that October is in fact Financial Literacy Month. And with that, I'm pleased to share that on Thursday for Superintendent's Conference Day, we will be providing an overview of presentation for STIU staff around financial literacy and really with a focus on their annual ERS statement, the growing their understanding of serving entitlements as a result of their ERS benefits, both contractual and jurisdiction. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Halison?
Good evening. I will also defer my, I will defer my comments for the presentation of financial statements.
I just have to, just for the board, just want to let you know that our District-wide October Board of Lockdown Drill went very well. I just want to thank the entire staff, our SROs, and all the law enforcement for their tremendous efforts. The Safety Help Emergency Fairness Committee, which Mr. Gunnster serves on, will be reviewing the lockdown drill for the great things that went, things that looked great and the areas that we want to continue to improve on. Also, I want to thank the Brewster Fire Department coming out to JFK for Fire Prevention Week. The kids really enjoyed it and thank you, Dr. Zamberlin, for all your efforts with that as well. And as the board, as a board, we will be visiting Brewster High School and JFK Elementary School next Monday. Building principals and their staff will be highlighting some of the great things that are happening in each of their buildings. I want to thank the Board of Education for taking time out of their work schedules to join us on that Monday to do that. Details will be in the Friday meeting. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. I will save mine for the rest later in the meeting. I have all kinds of things to talk about later. So we'll move on now to our student representatives. Lawler, is this your first meeting?
It is. You're so welcome. My name's Anna. I'm just filling in for Erin this week. About this what's going on at the high school. Tomorrow, the PSAT will be administered for 10th and 11th graders. Thursday will be Superintendent's Conference Day. Friday, the football team will be playing Calum Memorial High School at home. Tuesday, the 22nd, there will be an evening presentation on addiction and the adolescent crime in DHS PAC for parents and community. And it will cover topics like vaping. There will be a similar assembly on the 23rd for all high school students. Thursday, the 24th, is the Roxy Annual Inspection. Drill teams and cadets will be presented to Commander Miller, the area manager. They will be given badges and scores according to their performance. ACT testing will be held Saturday, October 26th, and SAT testing will be held Saturday, November 2nd.
Okay, we've got some presentations, recommendations, discussion. And first up is our external audit report. Mr. Norenzen, you're welcome.
Today, I would give you a brief summary of the results of the June 30th, 2018 audit. Here's the calendar that occurred in 19, we did a preliminary fieldwork in May of 2019, which is basically testing all the internal controls of the district, the cash sheets, the payroll, the journal entries. We had an audit committee meeting in May of 2019. The actual fieldwork occurred in July, April, July 29th. And there was another audit committee meeting in September that we went through the financial statements in detail as you are committed. And I will give you a summary of that report. Contained in the audit report is a summary of our communications, a touch on the management letter, the general fund, the schedule of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, budget and actual, the general fund balance sheet, and some closing comments. In the summary of communications, describes the audit's responsibility under auditing standards. We're required to issue an opinion based on the results of the audit. We did that, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is also known as a clean opinion. It's the best opinion we could receive. We're required to test the school districts' compliance with various laws, regulations, contracts, and grants. And that would be under the uniform guidance, which is supposed to give them a special aid fund for the federal aid they can receive. There's a separate audit for that. To conduct the audit according to auditing standards generally accepted in the United States, none of its guests, and obtain reasonable rather than absolute assurance that the financial statements obtained materially in the state actually were. Included in the summary is management's responsibilities. They include that they're responsible for the fair presentation of the financial statements, establishing and maintaining effective internal control, and applying the laws, regulations, grants, and contracts. As a result of the summary, the internal accounting controls, there are no material weaknesses noted. The accounting policies of the district are deemed to be appropriate. Management's judgment and accounting estimates were adequate, and there were no significant audit adjustments. There were no disagreements with management, there were no unresolved difficulties encountered during the audit. Management was never required to consult other accountants. And TKF Alcana Davies is considering, with respect to the district, in accordance with the relevant professional standards. There were no instances where suspicions or allegations were forged, irregularities or overlaps, and there were no material errors in financial reporting and misappropriation of assets. In the management letter, these are, we have three levels of comments that potentially there can exist. There's a material weakness, a significant deficiency, or these comments which are considered controlled deficiencies, the lesser of the three. The After Classroom Activities Fund, there was deposit that wasn't paid within the recommended 72 hours of receipt. Within the school, there were instances of missing central treasury receipts. And within the school lunch fund, the negative student account balance is approximately $30,000. This is an ongoing issue which repeated last year. These are just balances that have to be collected from students in the school lunch. Okay, here's the general fund, schedule of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, budget, and actual. The first column is the original budget, the final budget, the actual results, and the variances with the final budget, both positive and negative. The original budget for the revenues were $94.9 million. The final budget was increased slightly, and the actual came in $95,300, generating a positive budgetary variance of $155,000. On the expenditure side, the original budget is $96.8 million. The final budget was increased to $97.3 million, and the actual came in $92,959,000, and thereby generating a positive budgetary variance of $4.4 million. And then you have other financing sources and uses. These were all combined, and that was a negative $2,000,20,000, but most of the values transferred out, the Special Ed Fund, the Capital Projects Fund. But the net change in fund balance in the actual column was a positive, basically a surplus, $19,662. But if you look at the first, the original budget, that $2,864,000, that consisted of, that consisted of some reserve for encumbrances of about $183,000. It also included $2.7 million that you appropriated from 2018 financial statements at the end of the year to balance the 19 budget. And basically, the, which is indicating that you anticipated using $2.8 million, but the actual results were you're carrying a surplus of almost $20 million. Therefore, on a total budgetary basis, you had a surplus of $1,852,000. And then if you take the $19 million, add it to the fund balance at the beginning of the year, $10,704, you end the year at a total fund balance of $10,724,000. And the general fund, the top portion has your assets of $18.4 million, the liabilities of $7.6. Then you have your fund balance, consists of a non-spending category, which is prepaid expenditures, the runnings that you paid at the end of 19 for the expense that's going to occur in 1920. So that money is basically accounted for. You have restricted fund balance of $4.5 million, the signed fund balance of $1,961,000, and unassigned fund balance. The restricted fund balance, if you look to the right, you see the various reserves that were established by the district. You have the deferred tax tentereraries of $107,000, unemployment benefits of $10,000, the employee benefit, proved liability, which is basically compensated absences, that the employees aren't joining their time here, $2.5 million. The employees' retirement system, you have $1.1 million. And then this is new this year, the teachers' retirement system. Up until this year, the school districts were not allowed to fund the teachers' retirement system. The general municipal or main adjustment this year, and they're allowed to fund it. There are limitations on it. The contribution each year could only equal 2% of the total teacher salary from receiving here, and the aggregate to only 10% of all teacher salaries in the part of the year. Okay, so you still have a ways to go. And that's $1.5 million. And if we assign fund balance to $1,961,000, again, you're taking a piece of this fund balance, $1.5 million, and you're appropriating it to balance 2019, 20 budget, so it's at about $1.5 million. Again, we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, there are no material weaknesses. The general fund, unassigned fund balance equals 4%, which is the statutory limit for New York State. We're appropriating $1.5 million to balance the 1920 budget. And 2019 annual debt service is equal to about 5.4% of the adopted budget. Anything under 6% is considered lethal. So overall, the district had a good year, we're in sound financial position. The audit went very well. I want to thank Sue and Victor and the rest of the finance department, and basically there were no issues. Any questions?
If I could, I just also just want to acknowledge, you know, the entire business office, Susie Morgan, our treasurer's here, Lainine Ashgram, our school business administrator, and Marie Kovleski's here, our accounts payable extraordinaire. Our chief, our capable clerk, Sean Abiel, Michelle Colossar, and our secretary, Kathy King. They do a great job, and because of that, I mean, our work is easier. So I wanted to thank them as well.
Okay, we move on to School Bus Safety Week, October 21st through 26th, Putnam County Sheriff's Office. Ms. Judy Mira, your first sergeant today. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to Superintendent Van Loon and the Board of Education for having us here tonight. I'm Judy Mira. I am the coordinated liaison for the Putnam County Traffic Safety Board. If you've never heard of us, don't worry, many haven't, but that's why we're here and that's why we're going very public, so people really understand. The Traffic Safety Board consists of law enforcement, government representatives from each town in Putnam County, as well as representatives from all the towns, and state and highway departments. We work closely with all of them to ensure the safety of all our motorists and children that travel.
Just real quick, I just wanted to just say briefly that your bus drivers do a great job out of all the districts in the county. They complete a form, it's a state form, every time someone passes to stop school bus, they complete that form, they write down the license plate, and they can model the car, the location, and they turn it over to Judy, and we follow up on that. And it also gives us great stats, and we're to send personnel to do some enforcement. So Brewster does a great job with that, and we should be proud of your bus drivers. They're really doing a great job. And we just really want to come here and, you know, put this forward and, you know, increase awareness. And if you guys have issues with buses, with traffic, let us know. If you have a safety board, you know, we can address it. We have contacts with the state, and we can actually get pretty significant things done. So that's it.
There was a video, is that?
Yep.
Some of you may have seen this because this was a district incident, but for those that haven't. Could you believe that that could possibly happen? Would you think that anybody would do something like that? But that's what we're dealing with. We know that the, that the buses, once everything is established, they're pretty on schedule. So we feel that if motor is going to work, we know people have to get places. If you know the schedule of the buses, leave a few minutes early or just, you know, be aware. We know there are parents sometimes that talk to the bus drivers. We really try to encourage them, you know, not to, to speak to the transportation supervisor of the district if there are any concerns or anything like that. But sometimes kids forget things, and you can count on what a child can do. We did leave some brochures about the Traffic Safety Board. If you would go on our Facebook page, Putnam County Traffic Safety Board, and like us, we greatly appreciate it. We're very accessible. The brochures have our contact information. And we just really want to spread the word. So from here, hopefully it'll go to your neighbors and everyone else to please. Our kids are so important, and we want to ensure their safety. We don't ever want them to become a statistic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Your brochures are right there by Dr. Gosh if you want to look at any of those brochures. Okay, we now move on to lockdown drill recap. Debbie, you're not missing. You're welcome.
Thanks. I just want to briefly expand on Dr. Van Loon's statement regarding our lockdown drill from October 4th. This was the first time that any districts in Putnam County has done a lockdown drill where every single building on campus has been locked down. That is going to be the way that we're going to be doing our lockdown drills from now on. It is the policy of the district now that in the event of an armed threat somewhere in any one of our buildings, that every building in the district will lock down. The drill went off pretty well. The feedback that I got from state police, SROs, administrators was nothing but positive. Had a couple of technical difficulties that we're working on, but nothing that was so at hand that it was something that was unexpected. The drill went pretty quick. We didn't have too much impact into our school day, which was good. We got a lot of support from the state police. They were able to secure some extra troopers for us, which makes clearing the building all that much quicker. When we meet with the Shep Committee on October 30th, we will debrief and then hopefully come up with the next date for our next drill. We do have to do four of them a year. We like to spread them out so they're not all at once and not all piled at the end of the year. So we're going to hopefully spread them out throughout the course of the year. Any questions?
Yeah, question. I know, I don't remember the name of it, but I know we have a system now where teachers can lock down from different phones in their rooms. How is this lockdown drill started? Was it?
We use, we use the, each, at the front of each school, where the greer sits, there's a button that can be pressed. We used one at Brewster High School, just because that's where Jim happened to be located, so our tech guy was right there. He did exactly what it was supposed to do. It emailed everybody who had to email, and all the phone notifications went out. We got to hear Jim's voice quite a bit, which was effective. So we had one issue over wells that we're working on now to make sure that that gets fixed with the PA system, but other than that, I mean, everything just went like a ball. Teachers, can't say enough about the teachers here. I've done lockdowns in a lot of districts, and I do have to say that out of all the districts I've ever been in, you know, the teachers here take this very seriously. There were several doors that we could not open ourselves to barricading. I know there were a couple of doors that Lauren and I threw a couple of shoulders into and just couldn't make entrance, so I was happy to see that. The students were good. We didn't have any issues with any students. So it really went well, so we're hoping that we can build on that for our next drill.
That's great, thank you. I know one of the things we talked about was time. We weren't sure how long it was going to take.
Yes. The more manpower that we have, the quicker it's going to go. Because generally, it was always, well, all the SROs would get together and go building the building. We don't have to do that now. We get the extra help from the Sheriff's Office, from the state police. So we were able to stick pretty much to our time schedule from last time. Actually, some of the buildings were quicker than previous. So we're hoping that throughout the course of our drills for the rest of the year, we're going to be able to maintain that time schedule so it doesn't impact us as far.
That's great. And hopes that we have a lot of, so, okay.
Thanks.
Okay, we now move on to Brewster High School goals. Ms. Lawler, Mr. Everidge, Ms. Cole, Mr. Lawler. You're welcome.
So in late August, Dr. Van Loon's asked us for coming up with some goals for our building in particular, and Mr. Lawler was in our building. But these specifically are our goals for Brewster High School. So the first goal is to increase the graduation rate. Second is to increase communication faculty, students, and families, and then increase the visibility and relationship building within our buildings. So the first goal is to increase our graduation rate. This, this goal, over the last two years, with the cohort of 2014 and 2015, we've seen our graduation rate go down by 5% and then 7% total from the previous years from the 2013 cohort. This, there's a lot of reasons behind this. One of the reasons is an increase in the ENL population. There was also an increase in our special ed population. That population we can account for, our special ed population, so they already come in and we might know, but they might not already, they might need five years to graduate. With our incoming special ed pop, ENL population, most of our students are SIF students, so they come in with a third or fourth grade education. So it becomes, how do we get those students to graduate in a timely manner? In 2014, 2015, when we saw that increase in population, we were slightly unprepared for the increase in the ENL population. Currently, we have a full staff of an ENL department. We have a wide breadth of courses that the students can take, and every student, we have about 115 at the high school, every single student has at least one ENL support class and an English class. Plus, they are taught math and science in their native language. So that's some of the ways we're looking to increase this. What we're also looking to do is, is what we do, the model we use for our special ed population, our regular ed population, we have a lot of students in our MTSS, which is a multi-tiered system of support. We speak about these students every two weeks. There's about 15 of us who get together, and we go through every student who might be in jeopardy, whether they're a special ed, ENL, regular ed kid, and we discuss what can we do to get them to be successful by the end of the year in a timely manner. One of the things we want to do this year, we are going to do this year, starting next week, is our ENL students are going to have a case manager, very similar to the special ed population. So that's something new, and hopefully it will be successful in changing the graduation rate.
So the second goal that we had at the high school was to increase communication with the community, faculty, and students. So many of you read, we sent it out to all families, staff members via SMS, and it was just a way for us to introduce ourselves. It was like a great excitement at the beginning of the school year, and so we just wanted to share with our families exactly what was going on and what they could expect. So we reminded them about Open House, and we just gave them a quick info on Passport for Good, Positive Sign Thursdays, which is information that we'll share more with you throughout the course of the presentation, and is something that we intend to do. So at the end of this week, you'll receive our newsletter for the month of October. Again, just a way for us to improve school and home communications.
Our third goal is that we will increase visibility and relationship building at the high school. This includes consistent walkthroughs in the building, and, you know, keep in mind that Lauren and I are new to the building. With us being new, this is directly under, you know, our principal, Nicole Orler, as far as her directive in understanding what things needed to be fixed in the building, and how better the administration could help the teachers and everyone else in the building. So when we met, consistent walkthroughs in the building was one of those things that we so far have gotten very positive feedback about, consistently attending sporting events and school functions, as Mr. DeBrother would tend to, continuation of advisory group and student council meetings, Positive Sign Thursday, which is something that we'll talk about in about a minute or so, staff shout-outs as well, which is a great way for, our staff does wonderful things, they do. And they really, we want to be able to acknowledge that. So we have a wall actually that has a shout-out for things that are amazing things that our staff does on a daily basis. Even for today, I actually have three shout-outs for people that were helping me out with PSAT sort of stuff, so I have to shout them out, a couple of the secretaries and other people in the school. And monthly meetings with ninth graders during PLC, which is a time that we take in order to provide our ninth graders with important information for them to be able to grow into functioning adults in a sense.
Alrighty, so I get to step up here. We've been sitting for a while, but I'm not going to make you step up. So FISED, one of the things that came out, the state's had a little bulletin out somewhere in July about what's going on with your FISED plan. So it's time for us to review that, you know, what do we have in place, what do we need to improve. Not necessarily very glamorous work that's going to get done here, it's more behind the scenes, but we're going to actually see what we're doing in class, what we need to improve on, we're going to edit and finalize the plan, and we're going to work with the FISED staff starting on Thursday, you know, let them have some collaborations, some ownership with myself and Mr. DiMarco. Joe DiMarco is the assistant to the director this year, thanks to the support of the board, and has been extremely helpful. He's going to be helpful with this, but he's been real helpful with the next slide, which is health. He's been spending a lot of time, we want to see with that mental health day where we are. On July 1, 2018, the Mental Health Band-Aid came in, and Mr. DiMarco's been on a little listening tour with a lot of the building principals right now, working with me, he's got a 12-page document right now. What is our role of physical education, health? What is each building doing to promote? Preliminary reports say we're doing a really good job of addressing the state's mental health goals for us, but where are their gaps? What do we do well? What do we need to improve on? We'll work with the mental health committee to do that in all the buildings. We really want to see, I guess, before we even did this, I thought we were doing a really good job. So it'd be good to have a nice list of, you know, ideas of what's going on on paper. Athletics, we want to begin a new spirit parade. We want to start a little bit tradition, work with the community, want to start, think big and build with this. Start small, and we want us into a celebratory event. Athletic scheduling is not as easy as one would think, so we want to try to do that around an idea, just a little thought, maybe with the baseball, softball field, a little ties in with the weather and stuff like that. We want to try to get, we have tremendous community support, and we want to try to, you know, celebrate that, you know? Small events like the football tunnel at games are a real great way to do that, and let's grow that in other spots. And certainly, want to complete the baseball and softball project. That's been an ongoing project for us for, I think, as long as I've been directing at many stages. So we want to open the fields, they're looking really good right now, pet again, thank everybody, all stakeholders, and play ball.
So some of the ways that we'd like to accomplish these goals, and thanks to the board, we were able to
board, we were able to add some positions last year, switch some teaching opportunities around, and then add some electives, and this is one of our favorite electives this year. It's Math, MC Squared, which is Math in Carpentry and Construction, and it's taught by Mike Cunnion. So, it is part geometry and part construction, as you can see, I'm folding my gloves. So, it's a new class. We have two sections of this class. We have, so, almost 40 kids, about 40 kids take it, and anyone, this is open to any single student who has already taken at least two math classes. At the high school, it'd be three classes, three math classes to graduate at a minimum. As long as you've taken two classes, you can easily slide into this class. So, it's one of those new classes that we're trying to vote. The other class, one of our new electives, is Introduction to IT. You can see John in here. So, it is primarily taught by our library and media specialist and the director of technology, Jim Treelor, and John Castellano both push in and teach hands-on course and intro to technology. It's an every-other-day elective that really, there's no prerequisite for, so you can jump in, you can take the class at any time. It's one of the things that we found when we were looking at graduation rates, that kids really struggled to find courses that resonated with them. So, adding challenging and interesting electives was one of those things that we thought was going to be important, and so far, it's looking like this.
So, another project that we've been working on that we're really proud about is the Mindful Moment Room, and essentially, it's a beautiful space, and it's a quiet space that we have in the building dedicated to anyone, really, that needs just a safe space, a time to just get away, to center themselves. Rebecca Archer, who is part of our, our health team, she's fantastic. She's kind of like our mindfulness guru, and she has mindful ambassadors, and these are students that have really taken a liking to it, and just kind of look out for others, and, and help just, you know, extend that message that this is available to you. And to date, so, from the beginning of school up until last Friday, the 11th, we've had 70 unique individuals come to take advantage of the room. So, it's definitely being utilized, and we just want to encourage people that, hey, if you need a break, if it's getting tough, this is a safe space for you to, to kind of escape to for a little bit.
Probably one of my favorite parts of the day is walking into Career Skills, where I get to shake the students' hands and go over different social skills with them, as these guys are an extremely important part of our school. They actually develop two businesses, one being Candy Paws, and the other one being Bubbly Bears. So, Bubbly Bears is used by pretty much the entire school district, especially our athletics, where there's a laundry service that is used to clean our team's laundry, et cetera, and even maybe some forms of equipment. You know, they're great at that stuff. And Candy Paws actually brings joy to everyone, every single meeting that we have, including Mr. Treelor's meetings, and as well as some other teachers, because what they do is that they provide snacks as well as a festive environment. So, the last time that we met, they decorated pretty much like a fall festival sort of color, and brought us some brownies, and that I ate too much of, but thoroughly enjoyed. So, they're a great group to have, and they really make the school a brighter place to be. So, Positive Sign Thursday, so I had the pleasure of hanging out with Ms. Horler over the summer. Went to a conference in Boston, first time ever being there. Didn't like it, because I'm a Yankee fan. So, I think we're losing tonight, but I'm not checking my phone. But, I know, she's happier. Thank you, Michelle. But, so, we went to one of the, one of the presentations, and there was this gentleman who was a principal at a school up in New Hampshire?
Massachusetts.
Massachusetts, thank you. An open and zen up there. And he actually developed this, this thing where he had a Positive Sign Thursday just to greet the kids every Thursday, and, you know, spread some cheer, basically, by taking a picture with them, posting it on Twitter, and having a saying every single Thursday about something positive about the students. Now, this is funny, because Ms. Horler was all in on it, and I was a little skeptical as to how I would work with high school students, but I was completely wrong. Our students have taken, they love it. They actually seek us out to take pictures on Thursday. As you can tell, some of them might be like the same students. When they come back, that's my crew of guys right there on the right, so my boys. So, they come out and, you know, they are actually, they look forward to it, which is a great thing to, again, build relationships with students and staff. And even our staff members, they take the signs and they walk around, and they take pictures with the students and stuff all over, so it's been great.
So, and Ms. Roger, you guys mentioned earlier that he and I are new to the Brewster community, and Ms. Horler told us, wait till homecoming comes, wait till spirit. We, and it definitely did not disappoint. Students showed out, teachers showed out, every day had a theme, so we had Patriotic Day, where we dressed in our red, white, and blue. We had Decades Day, so it was interesting to see the fashions all come back, because, you know, dressed in their 80s and 90s, you go to Forever 21 or H&amp;M, and it's all there again. And then, we lucked out with Friday, the actual homecoming day, being gorgeous weather. So, we had a pep rally where all the teams were introduced, and they did like goofy little antics on the field, and the cheerleaders, and the dance team, and the band, they just all did a fantastic job. And obviously, it ended with a great win that night, that Friday night against Kipsey, our boys. I know Dr. Banlow and I were like, alright, guys, no more scoring, because everyone really had an opportunity to play. So, it was some guys that maybe wouldn't have got a shot to go out there and represent for the Bears. So, Passport for Good, I've been getting, I got an email earlier before I got here from a parent, and she was so stressed out about Passport for Good, and I said, don't worry, it's not going to prevent your daughter from graduating, but it is something that we're implementing. So, as you know, with everything new, there's always going to be a learning curve. But Passport for Good is an online app that we're using to track and monitor all of our students' community service activities and participation in clubs. They do so much, right? And I'm old school, so I take notes, and I know that that's what we've done in the past, but this is just an easier way to track all the good things that you do, and you can put towards your college applications. And we've actually had already two site visits from Passport for Good for, for teachers, advisors, and students. Tomorrow, they're actually coming back for teachers specifically, and then next Monday, they'll be in the ILC from 8:30 to 11:30, so please tell your kids. For any students who may have missed the first go-around, or who are struggling with it, we're still learning it, so there's definitely a learning curve for everyone involved, but it's something that we're really proud of, and we've rolled out this year.
And one of the, one of the last things, there's still more to come, but one of the last things that we're really proud of this year, and we're hoping helps a lot of students, is the Learning Center. So, it is peer-to-peer tutoring. Students can volunteer themselves, they can say, you know, I have a study call second period, and I'm really not doing, I'm not doing well in Global 2, which is a theme, you know, they just struggle with the writing. So, every period, Global 2, there's a teacher in there for duty, they have an electronic system, students have volunteered. We have over 150 student volunteers to tutor, and then there's a drop-down menu, and it's manned every single period, except for one, sixth period, you just don't have a teacher to do the duty. But, we have, so far, we have 150 students volunteered to tutor, and we've had over 200 students take advantage of it. And it could be, maybe you're just tutored for the week, getting ready for a test. It could be a long-term tutoring assignment, where you just know you struggle for maybe Global, maybe US. We have all subjects tutored, computer science, I mean, some of the tutors are the brightest, are the brightest. We have ninth graders tutoring, you know, students who are double-accelerated, they volunteered to tutor. It's located in the Tesla Lab, which is one of the small rooms in the library and stuff. So, that's how we plan to implement our three goals this year.
Thank you. It was a lot there, and you know where to start. Thank you for taking the time to put that together. I'm more excited to see the walls change in their place, and helping back at it, you know, in the year, and run forward. Thank you. Okay, so now we move on to proposed bylaw amendments and resolutions for 2019, yes, that annual business meeting. So, this is, I was actually thinking that next week, I just do this like network session.
To go through it?
Yeah. So, this is, when I did this with, I sat down with the Legislative Action Committee with West Putt, it took us two hours to go through this. We're not going to do that tonight. I asked you all to kind of look through it before we got here, and if anything stood out, we could focus on that. I can start with the two, there, let's see, there's how many? 26? Well, technically, 20 items that were voted on. Six were recommended to not be made, to be adopted. And just for the community that's present, if you're wondering, so, NISBA, New York State School Boards Association, it's kind of our, I guess, the obvious, for lack of a better word, and each year, presidents are designated, they all converge and have an annual business meeting, and we vote on what the direction will be for NISBA for that year, and the resolutions last a certain number of years, and then some start to expire, and they can get renewed, or new ones come up. Any resolution can be put forward by any district. So, if we had something that we thought really needs to be, you know, they need to advocate for us on some level, we can present that for consideration by the, by the state, for them, for the, all the districts in the state. So, they were online, if anyone took time to look over it, it was thirty pages. So, the two that stood out, and I'll just start with those, and you guys, you know, let me know how you want me to vote. The first one was number seven. So, this one was, NISBA supports the requirement that local school districts continue to make determinations as to the substantial equivalency of education delivered in non-public schools. So, NISBA met, and their group, they kind of reviewed these and decide, okay, we think these should be adopted or not. They all agree that this should. Our smaller group, the Westchester Putnam School Boards Group, when we met, we actually were mostly no, actually, and there were a few yeses. And the discussion revolved around the fact that, from our understanding, with these new regulations, the superintendent, so, in this case, Dr. Banlow, has to work out a plan with, you know, the other independent schools within our district, to make sure that, you know, they're compliant with regulations, and that kids are meeting the standards. And the issue that we had with it, those of us who were thinking no, that we wouldn't, you know, that meaning we don't, we don't want to support having that responsibility, is because the liability, we take on liability. So, if a district is failing, we have no part in its day-to-day functioning, its running of it, all that stuff, but yet, any failing of it falls on us, and the financial fail, like it all falls on us. So, that's, it's a problem. You know, so we really felt that we should, that we should not really be, have had that level of responsibility to what others can do independently, even though we're overseeing it. So, there was a lot of discussion about that particular item. But, so like I said, NISBA, they all said they were supporting that yes, districts should oversee that in their mind. It would allow for that, making sure that other schools are doing their job, and kids are, you know, being literate and all that other stuff. But, in our discussion a few weeks ago, we were split on that. So, I kind of need direction from you guys on how you're going to vote, and it'll decide with all the districts that show to vote that day, whether NISBA will, in fact, fight for legislation that essentially forces districts to continue this, or to not.
But, there's currently, there's currently legislation that requires the district to do this, right? So, this is proposing that we support that continued legislation, but if we, and if they were to not support the continued legislation, it doesn't necessarily mean that that legislation's going anywhere, right?
No, but what can happen on the floor is we can make an amendment. Like, so, I could, for example, if that was the request, to make an amendment, in fact, to come up with language to get rid of that, or to change the language somehow. Perhaps, you know, oversee that they're all compliant, but, you know, work on the liability piece somehow. If that doesn't fall, it falls to them. And that happens. So, we'll sit there, it's a four-hour meeting, and we'll go through, and then people do make changes and amendments to the language of things. So, but as this language stands here now, which is what'll be up on the screen, I need to know, you know, what is our opinion on this language, and then you can let me know if you want to make recommendations to change our policy.
So, there's already existing information now, this, I think Dr. Gash has reported some times at the meetings of different districts. If they want to be willing to kick up some money to help us do it?
Well, those are, that's in here too.
I'd be all for that.
Yeah.
Other than that, it doesn't make any sense.
There's, there's no money and responsibility.
So, if Dr. Banlow isn't responsible for overseeing, and then who is?
I would guess the schools themselves.
So, it would be like their principals or whoever's?
Their administrators.
And then they would have to answer the state?
Right now, we have to answer for them to the state. Yet, we don't control what they're doing.
Yeah, I attended a session of OCS's last spring on this, because the, the law, this has always been on the books, but the commissioner put forward guidance on how to interpret that, that many districts felt, especially in our region, felt was a stretch, and wasn't true to what was in the, in the language, in the, you know, in the regulations. So, and I think some of this came out of the immunization debate last year, where initially, we were, the lead educational agency was responsible for overseeing that piece, but it is now morphed into, we would need to go in and visit schools, and make sure that their curriculum is, their curriculum instruction and assessment, all, all aspects of their, you know, of their running of the schools is equivalent to what a student would get in a public school. If I condition or difference.
Do schools push back? You know, if you're walking, saying, okay, show me, are they pushing back and saying, or just they're complying?
Well, you know, there, we have a good relationship with the two schools in our catchment area. They're independent, right? So, we, we converse and collaborate on title grant funding, but there is a give and take with that in terms of what our responsibilities are, what theirs are, in terms of making sure that we meet certain requirements. We have a good relationship, but this would be pushing that, because we would be saying, almost, we know better, we need to come in and give you the final stamp of approval as to whether or not this is substantially equivalent participation.
And sometimes, I mean, parents choose schools for certain reasons, so now we're kind of right overdicting the direction potentially, yeah. So, with this language, yes, no?
I mean, I think, you know, based on this discussion, you should probably vote no for it. I mean, I don't think we need more work to do.
Anyone have, think it's a good thing?
No.
Do you want me to propose the change in language? Because essentially, then, just means... And I can ask, Michelle, do you find that there's, that this is a good thing on any level, and that compromise could exist in there, or should everyone just do their own thing?
Part of the confusion that I know a lot of districts were feeling when we had this session was that the guidelines put forth by the state education department weren't very clear. So, we had this mandate, but there weren't a lot of, there wasn't a lot of support in terms of how we could realistically accomplish this, what the timeline would be, what kind of resources we could have to do that. So, I mean, if, if anything, you know, if we want, if there is any language that could be put in, maybe clearer, well, actually, I shouldn't say that, I'll stop.
No, I, because it's helpful, because you're, right, essentially, you're the one doing it, and it's work that our district has to take on, that we have to fund, and however we do it. So, it's helpful to know in the trenches. We'll say this, we will, we have to do it.
If it's something we actually have to do, what would be helpful is if we had clear guidelines, is what it would look like, resources to back that up, and even, you know, at the end of the day, not necessarily the, the final stamp of approval, but maybe something that would be a recommended course, or something along those lines, if we had to.
So, that's, that's a good suggestion, like, so, recommended course, but they're responsible ultimately for their own execution on it, that we can say, but now go handle that, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And maybe something that could be a particular area of focus for a year, as opposed to a whole comprehensive overview or undertaking of how they function, if we have.
Sonya, I don't, I don't think Albany particularly passes laws with thoughts to what the impact is going to be at the local level, I think they pass laws, and they do let us figure it out.
So I, I don't know, I mean, to me, I mean, I, I don't know exactly, when you said we have the responsibility, so we have the liability, what that looks like. Does that mean a student who went to a private school comes back and says, I didn't receive that education, so the financial or the punishment falls on us? I mean, I, it sounds to me like what, you know, we're kind of taking on something that ultimately we shouldn't be responsible for, and then maybe parsing out how we could do that better. I'd say we just try not to have any responsibility for it whatsoever.
Absolutely.
I agree.
That's a better answer. Okay. All right, well, there's two options. So I know this will be a discussion next Saturday, not this coming Saturday, Saturday. Okay, so, and the other one that was discussed heavily. Hold on. I mean, I have tons of them, all of them, I guess. Yeah. So, if you look at the twenty-one through twenty-six, I had, I sent you all the email with, right, the shortened version. This one was one of the ones not recommended for adoption. So NISBA was saying, we don't think that you guys should even, you know, consider it. And just to read it, because we were mixed on this one also. So this one says, "NISBA should support legislation to allow retired law enforcement officers to work in public schools as security guards, directors of security, or supervisors of security without effecting their pensions, without pension waivers." So, again, NISBA said, they were, so, for example, the district that put this forward, I'm not sure who, but, when more, I'm not sure where they are. So they were the ones who put this forward for consideration. And NISBA said they weren't recommending it, but it's for us to decide. And the, the issue was, the discussion on it was simply that it would be selecting, you know, it would have one protected class. There's many union groups out there that would then potentially could be a precedent setting. And it got very, it was a very messy conversation. So in the end, the group, the consensus was to, to agree to not support this as a resolution for adoption. There were some in our discussion that felt that it should be put forward regardless and let that one group get that privilege. Because right now, this, what is it, thirty hours, like, I believe, right, you can't work?
Can't go out.
Thirty hours. So they were saying that if, if the works needed, that they could do it, whatever. So it just, everyone thought it was a very slippery slope, considering so many other groups would then... So it was just one of those things. So right now, the way it's worded, this district presented it so that they could be allowed this kind of exception to the rule or whatever. And most people agreed with that. Does anyone here feel I should vote that yes, this should be something adopted as something that NISBA advocates for us?
So, the way I'm reading this, the way the police pension system works is you can't get a job and make a certain amount of money in a public, New York State public setting, and still collect your pension. I don't know if that applies to anybody else. Like, if you're getting a pension from a different company, there's no, it's because it's, it's sort of, it's like double dipping. They're trying to prevent double dipping. So, this would go to the pension system and say, waive that rule. It's not necessarily, I don't know that I see the connection to other unions, because it's not necessarily a union issue, it's a pension system issue. And so, I don't know how this becomes a slippery slope unless there are other unions that are out there that need waivers.
I think they did mention it, and they may not have.
But usually, it's only a state pension that you have to worry about state work after the time.
So then I guess it would apply to anybody who has, that will apply somehow, they just pre-sold to us.
I don't know who else gets a state pension. I mean, teachers do. I don't know, what's the rule for, as far as when teachers take a job after retiring?
So there, excuse me, there are three major pension systems in New York State, TRS, ERS, and PFRS, Police and Fire. So there are three public pensions in New York State. And also, the New York City Board of Education has its own pension system. And pensioners cannot earn more than $30,000 without putting their pension at risk. So the first, they're allowed to earn up to $30,000 in a calendar year. Once they exceed that $30,000, they put their own pension at risk and forfeit, you know, some percentage of their pension.
And does, and that applies to teachers and employees also?
Yes, it applies to each of the three pension systems. So ERS employees, if you were a, you know, custodian and you retired as a custodian in Brewster and wanted to work in Cardinal, you couldn't earn over $30,000.
And I'm just, I want to go.
The other groups wouldn't be qualified for this position. So I understand not wanting to create a two-tiered system, but it's not like we're going to have retired teachers coming in to be security.
No, 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 they could then argue, you did it in that group, now I want to teach, come back and...
If they teach at a different school, then you're always letting them get a pension.
Yeah.
Right.
That was just an argument why this shouldn't be something to have NISBA advocate. So I need to know if you want me to support that it's not something that NISBA supports? Or, I mean, if you guys can differ too, I just need kind of a majority of the thoughts.
But to what you're saying, even if this were passed, if it's a pension issue, a pension, I mean, pension, not really to be governed by this? Pension system, or as provided, or as...
Who would advocate to change the laws that govern, yeah, however that works, I don't know.
I mean, personally, in this particular field, I mean, I don't, I don't know that people retire from teaching to start teaching necessarily somewhere else. Whereas I think, and I'm not trying to speak for the, for teachers or retirees or anything like that, but that's not what I know. But what I do know is, having the ability to hire your best possible director of security, security guards, people like that, and to be able to tap into people who have worked in that field, worked in that municipality, and not have to get them to either get a waiver or, or take, basically, you know, if, if we're looking at hiring someone who worked locally to come in and work in the schools, we don't want to tell them we can only pay them $30,000. We want the best possible candidates for that job. So, I, I'm not trying to, to, you know, Carrie's point, I don't want to create a two-tiered system either, but I think there is sort of, there is a reason to consider that the people who would be uniquely qualified for these positions in the schools are probably going to be recently retired local law enforcement people.
Anything we can change to increase the poll of people that, for this type of job, might be awful?
Okay, so, two, to put it back on the...
Yeah. I'd vote for it.
Okay. So, then, those are the two that stood out. I have notes and comments on all items. There were two that were nineteen and twenty that we really, we read them and moved on. They were, they were just about nineteen, twenty, about board policies. And they're both from the same district, so they must have issues. Because they wanted NISBA to advocate to make sure that board people, like trustees yearly would have to have a training and that board officers have officer training. So like, I've gone three times, but it's, by now, it's by choice. They want to make it a thing that you have to, other than, it's all your, you're mandated your first year. And after that, you can sit here for twenty years and never be trained again on anything if you choose not to. So they were trying to put, have language differences in place, yearly kind of stuff. So we all said, okay, it's fine if that's, you know, and really, people should be responsible enough to do that, but...
And if that gets passed, do we have to then in turn, are we forced to say, well, we're going to mandate this? Or does it once again, this is not a law, it's just a...
Yeah, so they're asking for sample board policies so that districts could adopt, you should, because policies become our internal law. So that, yes, if we adopted such a policy, then we would mandate ourselves to doing yearly training. Which right now is optional, and I mean, I think we're pretty good anyway. Conventions and stuff like that. So that was it. But everything else, anyone have anything else that stood out for them?
No, but I will just note that...
Oh, there were two that they objected to, right?
Oh, yeah.
But that, I covered it, did I cover it? Seven, yeah, okay, I was right.
I was just going to say that, because we had talked about it months and months ago, about the district being designated a polling place. And there's a resolution in here that would say, the districts have the, I hope I say it right. I mean, it's basically up to the districts whether or not they'll allow themselves to be used as a polling place.
Yeah, they get to determine, so that, that's something, yep.
Because that was a concern about having so many people in the high, in the high school, where kids are around, you know, after-school activities, just a lot of things going on at the high school. And why does it have to be there? Especially with the new law that allows.
Yeah, and this says exactly that, allows boards, board that to determine if they're building these plans.
So that was something we discussed a few months ago, so it's good to see that on there.
Yeah. Anyone else, anything that was confusing or stood out, or that you want me to... So everything here that's proposed, I will vote in favor of. Is there anything you want me to vote no for from the twenty provisions? Except for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would so localize to one district, if it is that.
Yeah, and they do have language in here that talks about also how the resolution just back to, you know, hey, what you make, like, if you're making us do stuff, pay for it. We do that all the time, you find.
Doesn't seem to work.
Yeah, but, you know, we got to try. Okay, so that's, that piece is done, if we're all good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. I'll let you know how I'm doing, I'll text you all. Okay, so we can move on to our last discussion item, which is Garden Street School, myself and Mr. Pingu. I just want to comment before we get into it. So, Dan and I will just go through some of the talking points on it, where we're at with it. And then, during the public remarks that follow, anyone from the community that wants to make a comment or has a question, you'll be able to come up, you know, as usual, and comment on any of the action items, but that one as well, obviously. We'll close public comments. And then, we get into action item number one, which is Garden Street. You know, we can address whatever was raised. But just to, again, you know, reiterate in our citizens' past meetings, so board meetings are our business meetings that allows you to watch us talk. Wonderful, does that please sound? It's not funny, no, I'm sorry. But it doesn't allow for a dialogue or an exchange in this setting. So, we structured this way to, you know, so we can present some information, give you an opportunity to have some time at the podium. And then we'll follow up with that action item. So good, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Banlow, board members. So, Garden Street School property was, the board entered into a contract at eighteen, well, over eighteen months ago, to sell the property for 1.475 million dollars. There was an initial deposit that, up $75,000, that became non-refundable upon the expiration of ninety days from the date of the original contract. The purchaser had said that he was going to, as part of the original negotiations, that he would only buy the property if he would obtain site plan approval, which, which is typical. And he had eighteen months to do it, and that could be extended up to twenty-four months if he, at the board's discretion, if he paid an additional $25,000 towards the purchase price. So there was not much development from the purchaser, we didn't hear a lot. And then all of a sudden, within the last, you know, just before the expiration of the eighteen-month period, received a contact from the purchaser indicating that they would like to waive their, they want, they're still interested in the property. They are willing to waive the contingency of getting site plan approval as long as we give them a certain period of time, for sixty days to, to close. So, you know, from what, from, from the board's perspective, board has an obligation in this contract to get the best possible price as fiduciaries for the district. So, based on the original timelines, essentially, the contract amendment that's before you tonight would require the purchaser to close within, on or before November twenty-sixth, which is about six weeks from today. And no contingency, he doesn't have to get site plan approval. And so frankly, the, from, the board has to consider, approving this contract amendment will get the title to this property, will result in the board transferring title faster than ultimately they would have under the original terms of the contract if you, if they had pursued site plan approval. No contingencies whatsoever. Second, thin point to really, to think about here is that this is, the Garden Street School had been determined not to be needed for the school district and they're, and no, was it needed for school purposes anymore over seven years ago. And so by entering, approving this amendment, you're going to be getting the best possible price now. And it will return the property to the tax rolls. As school boards, when you own property, you don't get taxes. But there are assessments on the property nonetheless. So if you are to approve this contract and close, you will realize the purchase price less the debt service, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. The property is currently assessed by the town of Southeast at over $4 million. And based on the Don Homestead tax rate, under real, under New York State law, the property will go right back on the tax rolls once title is transferred. On a pro rata basis for the remainder of the fiscal year. So you would realize about $75,000 of additional real property taxes that you would otherwise not have. And the property would then remain on the tax rolls for the ensuing fiscal years at its full value, which is currently about $125,000. Approving a contract amendment will avoid litigation that couldn't, that would likely prevent the board from entertaining other offers, from other parties during the pendency of the litigation. So, we're, we're under a contract. The board would order reject this amendment and cancel the contract. The purchaser, you might recall, put $75,000 down of his money, so it still has an interest in this property. And could, could bring an action, maybe very well likely he brings an action. Whether he's successful or not, not clear. But the important thing is to note that once, with real property litigation, if, if, if the buyer is alleging a breach of contract, that he, that basically will tie up the property. The purchaser would put what's called a notice of pendency against the property, which is notice to the world that, look, I have a potential interest, I think I've not, that the seller has breached the contract. And that would just tie up the property in litigation for, for the duration, which could be a considerable period of time. And during that period of time, the board will not be able to entertain any new offers on the property. Lastly, this is an old prop, this is an old building. And approving a contract amendment and closing in the next sixty days will reduce the district's costs associated with owning this property. So, I had mentioned earlier, there's still debt service on this property of $265,000. You won't have to pay that out. I mean, you, you have to when you sell a property, there has to be an escrow set up to pay that down. But you won't have to pay any interest and principal on it. It eliminates the carrying cost. Even though we don't occupy the building, and for students, there's utility costs, maintenance costs, insurance costs. And that runs about $80,000 a year, estimated. We do get a little bit of building aid back, but not enough to offset the cost of, of those maintenance costs. And in about five, or, I'm sorry, six years ago, there's a significant amount of asbestos in the property. And if you were to, one day decide that you're going to own it, you wanted to reoccupy the building, there's a considerable amount of asbestos that has to be evaded. It was estimated in 2013 to be about $850,000. It was estimated in 2013 to be about $850,000, and that's without taking any, doing a full inspection, so, you know, that's just the baseline. And then lastly, the roof is over 30 years of age, you own it, and if something happens to the roof while you continue to own it, you might have to replace that, and that was estimated, according to your 2010 five-year capital plan, at about $600,000. So all of those costs will be eliminated, approve the contract amendment and close in the next 60 days, or, I should say, 42 days. Happy to take any questions? Do you have anyone on there? On the board?
Yeah, go ahead.
So if we were to approve the amendment, what is between us and closing in 42 days?
Just the title report he has to get, if there are any objections to title, they have to provide that to us, and if they don't, we, we, we close, you know, on or before that November 26th date. The amendment does give him an option, as is typical in real estate contracts, to ask for an additional 30-day extension. If he does, if the purchaser does that, though, you have the right, you could say yes or no at that point, and you could insist on an additional $25,000 towards the purchase price at that time, which would be non-refundable, in other words, it would be your decision.
Is, just, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So the impression I got from what you've said so far is, if we were not to approve what he's put forward currently, he might have an action against us?
Yes, he could, because he had, he's a, the contract, he could, he could argue that it's a breach of contract, that it was his own, the contingency was his, he had to do that, under the original contract. He had to get site plan approval, if he did, he could walk away. He's essentially said, I'm, I'm ready to close, I've already paid $75,000, I'm ready to pay the other $1.4 million. And so by, and he has a certain amount of period of time to do that, as a general rule. So if we were to say no, and, and terminate the contract, he could argue and bring, you know, say that, that was his contingency, it was an art contingency, and he could bring a breach of contract. The important thing is if he does bring a breach of contract, he would most likely file what's called a notice of pendency, or this pendants. That is, that, that binds the board, the board is basically, if that happens, you, no one's going to be offering the property, making an offer on the property until the litigation is resolved, and that could tie up the property for a considerable period of time.
Do those rules apply to the 30 days that he could potentially ask for, like, so if we approve it, he's got 42 days to close? Has he bought himself that next month also by us doing this, or that's a separate?
No, that's, that's a separate, at your sole discretion.
Okay, thank you.
I was gonna ask a question. Oh, if he doesn't close in 42 days, we would be prepared to close, but if for some reason he is not prepared to close on or before November 26th, and we don't grant the 30 days, at that point, we can terminate the contract.
Yes, you would, you'd terminate.
There's a little information there about a pilot agreement, that there's wording here about standard, how would that affect us?
That's not gonna affect you in the closing, it would've come up, I think, had he pursued the site plan, I mean, it's still in the contract, if, but effectively, that clause is not gonna matter if you, once you transfer property. He's not gonna be in a position without a approval of whatever he was going to do from, in order to go and ask, and ask for an industrial development agency for payment in lieu of tax agreement. That clause was put there in originally, in the event he did pursue site plan approval and sought some kind of payment in lieu of tax agreement from an idea, that, that eventual ity really won't affect this transit, this amendment.
If more of a site plan incentive?
Yes.
Now that that site plan's gone, it's sort of, maybe?
It's, it's really, it's really not even relevant.
Did we continue to show the property after we got an offer on it? Because even though you're in contract, can't you still show the property if somebody's interested?
Well, an offer and the contract are two different things. I think we were able to show after an offer was made, but after we entered into a contract, we didn't show it.
If we didn't, why didn't we show it, because was there just no one else who was interested in it, or?
We don't wanna be accused of potentially breaching any, any, any contract. Yeah, the purchaser's right, when the purchaser enters into a contract with the seller, the expectation is that they will close at a particular time, so it's effectively taking it off the line.
Yeah. I mean, we have a contract to sell it to someone, so we can't enter into another contract to sell it to someone else.
So, does anyone on the board have any other questions for right now? No? Okay, can I ask you to just kinda hang out in case we have, the board has questions perhaps?
Sure.
In a little bit?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, we'll now move on to public remarks, so later on, you'll see, is this our second meeting, two minutes later?
Yes.
Okay, so for today, we still have a two-minute limit, we did change, for those of you who weren't here, hopefully we'll pass it tonight, to extend it to a three-minute timeframe, but it'll be at our next meeting, because we're passing it off tonight. But for tonight, if anyone wants to come up, we have two minutes, please address the board with comments or questions, and when we move on, we'll address as much as we can after that. And so you can comment on any of the action items we have up for tonight.
My name's Trevor Clark, and this is a lot of really new information. I have prepared a statement to read, but based on these comments, I wish I had more time, and I wish I had more than two minutes. Just a couple things, one, you said there'd be $75,000 additional dollars in taxes, I don't, or additional tax revenue in the school, I don't think that's true, I think it would just reduce the levy, and then there's $4,000 parcel, so we're talking about dollars here. Roof estimates, I saw $250,000. If, I don't understand, if a contract is expired, how you can be in breach of an expired contract if you give 30-day extension, but then you terminate at that point, or a 42-day extension, if that expires, then you can terminate it or choose to extend it, that's no different than this. You're not under contract, I've talked to several commercial real estate brokers, they've told me that the property can be shown, I've been denied access to the property twice, and by your law firm, I believe, and it says right here in the contract, purchaser shall have no possession right, title, or interest of any nature in the property or part thereon until delivery to the purchaser of the deed to the said property and payment of the purchase price, as herein specified. So if it continues to be shown, you can't entertain offers, the building can be shown. The, the original contract had a $25,000 extension period, if they intend to close in 42 days, I don't see any reason why we cannot ask for that $25,000 for them to put in escrows, a non-refundable six-month extension. However, if they're gonna close in 42 days, $25,000 for that 42 days, that's what the original contract stated. I ask the board, please, to not approve this amendment in its current state. Do I still have time? And I just, again, how can we breach an expired contract, and why wasn't I given access to the building when it was not in contract since the 27th of September 2019?
Good evening, everybody, my name is Claire Pukowski. I do have questions about it, and I'm very concerned, and I'll just follow up what Mr. Larka said. If you have a contract that is completed, and the original contract that is signed by the party says, when I get to X date, if I haven't closed, if I haven't done what I said I'm going to do, I want to pay $25,000 to extend it by six months. I understand that there is an issue of money, I'd come back and I'd say a couple of different things. The first is that the building you know is worth $4 million, why sell it for 1.4? The building you know is central to all an area, it may have some problems, it may have some stuff, but the actual value of that, and the value of the repairs, may not actually be accurate. And if that's the case, are you throwing out the baby with the bathwater because it's dangling in front of you and saying, we've waited this long, we've waited seven years, we gotta get rid of it? If you have other parties that were interested and denied access, then it is actually not appropriate to say to this builder, oh, you dropped your condition, you know, your safety net, you dropped it, you will not pay the additional $25,000, you claim you'll be ready for closing inside 60 days, and then, oh, by the way, board, if you want some of that money, then, oh, well, we'll not give you the $25,000 then for an additional 30 days, but then it's okay to drop it. It sounds like it is the best part of dealing, and the art of dealing, and not saying that the attorney shouldn't do that, they should do everything they can for us and for them, but I think that this is a little too little, a little too late, and it certainly is in violation, the only person who's violated the contract is the buyer himself. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jada Callahan, I also want to talk about Garden Street. So I find it interesting that an expired contract written, or at a minimum reviewed and approved by our legal firm, allows us to have, be involved in a lawsuit after the contract expires, sounds like it left us exposed, and then it sounds like a little bit of a scare tactic, because if we extend it, but then, then it goes away, we have no exposure to us. Just wanna read the language that's put into the contract today. The closing will take place on or before November 26th, 2019. No adjournment of the closing date will be granted to the purchaser unless the seller consent, agrees, and the purchaser delivers on or before the above-mentioned closing date, an additional non-refundable sum of $25,000, which shall be credited. What I'm not seeing in this language is great, if we say, we'll give you a little bit more time, and give us $25,000, there's now no new end date. Now it says they've missed the date of November 26th, they have decided prior to that, to give us $25,000, and then, what is the new end date? We have no language in there that is protecting us to say, we'll give you a 10-day extension, we'll give you a 15-day extension, we just say, we will extend it, you gave us $25,000, and now we have an adjunct, a giant liability, exposure yet again, for what we would be able to do with that. And the last thing I just wanna bring up is, Garden Street is the heart of Brewster. Our town has struggled, our schools have struggled, we are trying to look forward and look past that, and bring a vibrancy back to Brewster, raise our educational standards, and have a community once again. We are giving it to a developer that has given us no information about what they're going to do, they've been silent, they had said that it'll be market value, which is Section 8 in the town of Brewster.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for letting me speak, my name is Lynn Eckhart, I am in the Brewster School District. From listening to this, and I need to do more research, obviously, it was a lot to take in, but it seems to me that the buyer certainly didn't act in good faith, I'm not sure what they were doing for 18 months, but you kept up your end of the bargain. However, your fight, your sharing duty is to, to me, that the people, the taxpayers and residents in Brewster Central School District, thus, I can't understand why this building wasn't shown, why Mr. Larka's, Larka was turned down for that. It seems to me, you, I understand, you wouldn't take another offer, but to show it for backups, I was in real estate for 20 years, and rated commercial is different than residential, but it seems to me that this was not acting, you weren't acting in good faith to, your fight, your sharing duty to represent people of this school district, thank you.
Just one paper, thank you. I do not need two minutes. Anyone else?
Can I take her two minutes?
Anyone else have anything they wanna comment on, anything else that we're, that we have before us this evening?
Hi, my name is Monica Larka, I taught at Garden Street for 24 years, I taught at JFK for, for one year, then, after Garden Street closed, I taught at St. Lawrence for 15 years before that. I'm an educator by heart, I'm also a community member, and what's happening to our town is difficult, and I don't understand why you're willing to address a builder who will do something that will just continue what is going on in our town right now, and not perhaps consider what the community needs, and what the district needs, and I respectfully ask you to put this off, have some more community meetings about it, and let's do what's right for the town, the village, and the school district, not what's right for the building.
Anyone else? Oops, sorry. Okay, I will close the public remarks portion, and we'll move on to action item number one. Approval of amendment to the contract to the sale of Garden Street School. I first need a motion, and a second, and then we can have a discussion. Carrie and Lynn, thank you. Okay, so we have some questions that were raised, and some comments that were made, and I, I might need some help to make sure, you know, I'm, my memory's correct. So our communication with the buyer was prior to the contract expiring, and as we are allowed, we had a call with our attorney, everyone was on the call except Mr. Seaman, and we had, he presented that to us, as is, you know, would be, would normally be the case, and asked for, you know, our direction in this situation. So everything actually took place within the deadline of the contract, and my understanding as well, from how I read the contract, is that it's to close on acquiring, based on final site approval. So it's not that it has to close the 27th, it will close on the site approval, which is the date, and I believe there's further language that says, we'll then be allowed 30 days for the closing upon that site approval, which was extended past the 27th. And what he was asking for was instead of a 30, for the 60. So our understanding of how it played out was everything was within the timeline, with the exception of him asking for the additional 30 days, starting on that, that Friday, which right, the 27th, 67th? So, I mean, anyone can, you know, correct me?
No, it's correct, I mean, there, it didn't terminate, there was, the contract didn't terminate, he asked for, he waived the site plan approval within the time period in which he was, in which he was agreed to get site plan approval, and like you said, asked for an additional 30 days to close.
Right, and so we actually put the, the language into the amendment, the contingency of, at that 60 days, you don't have to go forward, period, which is no reason essentially. If we were to choose to allow him more time, then you will pay us, period.
And that time period, if we were to allow additional time for him to close, there would be another amendment to the contract that would provide for whatever period of time we agree to give him, and if we don't agree to give him, we have our lawyer send a letter saying the contract is terminated. So if we were to agree to more time in exchange for the $25,000 payment, presumably, there'd be another amendment to the contract that would set forth a timing, just like this sets forth a new timing.
Right. So, am I correct in, are we correct in our understanding of that?
Yes.
Okay. So that was one thing, things that were raised. In terms of, this was, there was extensive conversation- Again, there were many, many public board meeting conversations about all of this. Because if we all remember, eight years ago, this was a big deal. And so we definitely covered all of that, you know, at that time. And now it's eight years older and it's not like it's fixing itself. So that is a big concern. And, let's see. I mean, we could probably argue there was, the issues were raised, these questions were raised about the cost of repairs and such. I mean, I'm sure if we brought five different people, we might get five different answers on estimates, but we were going on, you know, we have the estimates that we have based on the information, you know, those recent information we have. Let me look at anything else that was brought up. The issue with access. So I believe specific to, and I could be wrong, I have to go back and look at, I guess, emails or dates, but I, I thought the access was actually denied after the 27th, once the current, the current, the contract, once we were in this closing phase. I believe that's when the access was requested and denied, it was after the 27th. So that was probably why, because honestly, I feel like I need to ask Kevin this question. I know he's presented to us, and I feel like he did talk about over the past year, interest that was coming in and potential buyers. There was the art, like, there were different things, I feel like, there wasn't any jury, I'm not sure, and I, so I can't say for sure, but I just, I know that for this specific case, it was because it was in that time that we are now officially in a closing period. So that, you know, it could have been the reason for that.
Can we just discuss?
Yeah, so now I want to at least cover some of those things, if anyone wants to add anything to those questions or concerns, and what else, you know, whatever else we all want to say.
Yeah, I just would like to say that, you know, to me, to the board, there's, there's one question for us, which is, what do we have to do to make sure that we are abiding by our obligations under this contract? And that's separate and apart from whether the building has been shown to someone or anything else. We have to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. And, you know, Dan spoke to it a little bit. I mean, this would be, not just be a lawsuit for breach of contract, this would be a lawsuit for specific performance, where they are going to ask the court to say, "Make themselves property to us." So that, the power to be able to put a list pendants on that property, which is what Dan spoke about, is a death knell to that property. Because no one will come near it until the litigation is resolved. And the litigation won't be resolved for two-plus years. You know, so it's really, it's really a very, to me, an extremely narrow issue. We have an obligation to work in good faith under the contract. His waiver of the site plan approval, that was a protection built into the property, into the contract for him, not for us. So he waived it, that's not bad faith against us. He's taking out the protection that had been written into the contract for him, for his company. So asking for an additional 30 days to close is, is so typical, and it's actually extremely short, especially in a commercial transaction. So I just, you know, I don't, I see this very clearly, that the amendment should be signed because we have an obligation to act in good faith under the contract, and granting an extra 30 days falls within that.
If I could just pull you off that, I'm asking maybe the attorney. How does the fact that we have a contract and an extension period to close, list pendants, okay, you can put a lien on it, how is that any different than the amendment expiring and then us refusing it at that time? Is it because there's no, nothing written into the contract specifically stating he has that option, or there's no legal out for him in the contract? I just don't know what the difference between the two is.
Well, the difference is, in the original contract, we did not specify a date certain by which to close. In the amendment, of course, you know, site plan approval could have been, he had 18 months to get it, he could have asked for six months if he, if further, so not, not, that's not, there's no certainty there. In this amendment, the certainty is, right now, on or before November 20th, November 26th, because he specifically asked for an additional 30 days beyond what the contract said. He said he wanted to close 60 days after September 27th, November 26th. So now he has a date certain to close. So if he wants additional time, it's completely up to the board. It's on the closing, it's not based on site plan approval, because it was a different, that contingency is now out. So the only rationale, the only basis on which he could get an extension of the closing date is if the board is to grant it. And it's completely at your discretion.
A whole separate issue, brand new.
Yep.
I think Carrie made a great point. I mean, I think there are other issues and topics that came up tonight and could be worthy of conversation at some point in the future, either in a meeting or in another forum. But if, the question that's being posed to us is to approve the amendment, have a deadline in 42 days that this buyer, so far at this point, has not done well with deadlines. We set a deadline that we can either walk away from this clean and be done with it, or give him the opportunity to fulfill our obligations under the contract? If that's the question that's at hand, and that's what I'm hearing tonight, I mean, I don't want to be still talking about this two years from now, that, thank goodness, we're finally clear of the lawsuit that was brought. Whether we win it or lose it, it's two years from now, and who knows what the market looks like, and who knows what's happened to the building, and who knows what goes on? Have the opportunity, end of November, we may or may not have a second decision to make. But for right now, for tonight, it seems like the risk of voting no on this is far greater than the potential reward.
I'm signing Carrie. I don't want to run that risk of breach of contract. That's until we get to November, care what the decision may be at that time, if it's not what we want, or we want to accept, we move forward from there, and then we open back up. But I don't want to risk right now.
I have a lot of concerns about it. I just, I don't know if this buyer has good intentions as far as, you know, they put the offer in and then they didn't really show any more interest in it, they didn't come to see it, they had very poor communication with us, and then they waited until the last hour to call us and say what else they wanted. And I, I just don't have a good feeling about it, and I know a contract is a contract, but I just don't want to continue on with giving them the extra time. Because they haven't shown, I don't know, genuine interest, and I'm just not sure what their, their motivation is.
Yeah, there's been no good faith negotiation at all. We're the only people in good faith here.
Well, he's paid $75,000 down.
That was required by contract.
Well, right. And that's what we're talking about, what's required by contract.
All the other key points of contract. Yes, he waived site plan. Okay, but he never once approached the Village Brewster, I've been to a number of Village Brewster meetings, and then it never hurt him. We have contract clause in there, first 90 days, that's a really out clause, and every 15 days, you're supposed to send notification, buyer to seller, this is what we're doing, this we're planning. I don't think we ever got anything. I mean, so I just, in my opinion, I understand the legality of, I just don't think, you know, we need to do this. I'm not in favor of doing this at this time. I don't believe it's in anybody's best interest.
And with the, the piece of the potential that he could tie us up, you know, he may or may not, but likely would, since he's already invested money, and then he's set with that, we can't do anything with it. We're not sure how, I mean, that's also a big concern.
I mean, there's a lot involved. I like to look more at the big picture. Like everybody has mentioned, this is our town, this is the village, Southeast Brewster, wherever you want to say you live, this is all connected. And if it's six months from now, a year from now, two years, I can't see how another development in the town, adding more people, I mean, even to the school district. We're at numbers as it is, we're trying to keep our levels down. I saw a report on all the developments in the area and the possible kids that could come into the district. I don't see the development of another place that could possibly send more students into this district, how that serves even those people coming into that area, how it serves the people moving into this building, seeing good schools. But now all of a sudden, our numbers are 20, 25, 28, 30, because we have all these outside developments. And that's not even taking into account the Village of Brewster's grand plan to redesign their town, they've been working on it 10 years. If that ever comes to fruition, that's going to bring even more people into the village in the area, which is what we want. But now we have even more students set, we're not prepared to take care of. So if we could cut off one piece of that, I mean, I just...
So I guess...
I understand what you're saying on that, but that, we're too, it's too late to have that kind of discussion, because we, we entered into a contract with them. I totally understand all of those points, but...
I think it's also just worth noting that, I think, you know, and I was going to comment later, because we have a mid-piece to our agenda about emails, you know, Mr. Larka did also share with us his ideas, and I don't think anyone disagrees with the ideas. I think we, we talk about it all the time, you know, how to improve the district and the things we need, and different kinds of parks, and we all love these things. But two things to also consider in addition to, if you're seeing the contract, is that from, if the, let's just say that if this falls through for some reason, and it goes down the road with this development, and that all works out, and we get an offer from, you know, the town, we don't, we don't get to just sell it to them. The law requires us to actually put it to a town vote. So it could still, after everything that's just so awesome, fail by one person. And we have no idea, that's, that's just a reality of what it could be. And we've seen things get voted down before. I mean, the Southeast Museum, you know, it was like eight bucks to my taxes, and I was like, ah, whatever, yes, let's improve it. Got voted down, there was, there were just other things, I know. You know, so it's, oh, there's just so many uncertainties with the future. We know what we have here now, and I, you know, I, I want that to happen. I just, I, right now, we have to kind of, for me, I feel like I need to look at what's in front of us right now, and I would hate to see it get tied up for two years. It may end up being something you can't even look at, and, you know, looking at other buildings in the town, I don't know. You know, and it's 42 days away, and we can, you know, see how that, how opposing goes. But I just want to at least make that comment, that being that it's another municipality, you don't get, even if you offered us $2 million bucks, we'd cash.
That's fair.
Right? We, it would still have to go to vote, whatever it is. So, yeah. Does anyone have anything else they want on?
No, I'll say, Scott, I have the utmost respect and for your looking at this as a big-picture item. I mean, I think if, if you've lived in this town for any length of time, it's hard not to, to see the big-picture things that are out there. But for me, tonight, right here, what I'm going to be voting on is just how we potentially remain within contract. You're, you're right. So far, for 17 months and three weeks and six days, no communication. You took a big chunk off the table. We're in a position where we either vote to remain, to, I think even when we are not necessarily being met with good faith, we have to continue to act in good faith. And if there, if, if his actions at the last minute aren't indicative of his actual interest in the property, we'll have the opportunity to think big picture again in 42 days. But tonight, you know, this is, this is, it's a very narrow question and a very...
I don't think anybody here has bad thought towards it. I think we're on agreement, we'll be minded what's best, but, you know, we'll set the vote on what's here today.
I think one of my concerns too is that the contract wasn't very firm. It wasn't maybe exactly, to say exactly, it wasn't written exactly what it should have been. And now I'm not trusting that going forward, the, you know, the amendment or the extension will be. And that's what I'm concerned with too, is that I'm not trusting that this end will actually be the end.
Well, the end would be, we, we again, we vote, we say, okay, we're done with that, right? Because that's how, I mean, the language is at this point, and I think it's clear in there at this point versus before. I mean, it's, here's your...
Right, but with like 40 days and actually getting approvals and things like that, and working with banks, sometimes you can't close exactly what you want it, so...
Well, right, it'll leave for us to determine at that point, but I think we all feel the same, essentially, it's just how we're going to vote on the moment. You know, none of us are thrilled with how he's handled it. You know, if he fails in his end, he's, you know, he wouldn't work.
We'll know in 42 days.
Yeah. I don't know that he'll get much support, his support.
Right.
He's got a lot to do and...
We'll find.
Okay, so are we, are we good to vote? Any other last-minute questions or comments or thoughts? You know, okay, motion, it's like discussion, so now it's just a vote. So Act 11 number one, all those in favor of the amendment? So that's four, although it's opposed, two, we're missing one. So the motion passes for two. Thank you, everyone, for that discussion. I know it was, um, a lot. And now we move on to Act 11 number two, approval of A, external audit report and corrective action plan, B, internal audit report and corrective action plan, and recommended follow-up focus area, see by the committee charter.
Yes, so each year, we're subject to a financial statement audit. This financial statement audit was reviewed by our audit committee as a member. Also, our internal audit was reviewed by the audit committee, and the recommendation for a focus area audit in the spring, which is an intense, specific review, is focused on human resources. Again, I want to thank the business office for all of their efforts in getting the financial statements in good condition and the recommendation for approval.
Okay, thank you. Are you in motion? Can I do a second, please? Eric and Scott, thank you. Questions or comments?
I just want to thank Mr. Thompson for all his work, he's done a phenomenal job.
Just one question. On the school lunch fund, being in a negative over two years, I know there's no more lunch shaming, and hopefully it's all being handled properly, is that just like more of an accounting thing, we carry over the number because we have to show it?
Yes.
But if most of it does get paid?
Yes, and this was a discussion topic at our audit committee meeting, and it's been frustrating to us and other school districts, because federal guidance is different than state guidance. Federal guidance is probably more conservative and allows the school district to carry over those balances from New York State. New York State recommendations are to follow federal guidance. However, there are other prohibitions. So it's really, as Dr. Gosh mentioned earlier, the guidelines are really, you know, they're not, they're not, they're not working. They're, they're often in conflict of each other. So what we've done is we carry forward balances from kindergarten through senior year. Any payments that a parent makes will be applied to that negative balance. In the states, you know, the states, not regulations, but recommendation, each year a negative balance should be wiped out. And any new payments that a parent makes should be credited towards the subsequent year. And Brewster, they're carrying forward all those negative balances, any payments that we receive, we're applying to those negative balances. And it's not just a Brewster issue, it's a, it's every school district throughout New York State. I shared with the audit committee a NISBA article about the challenges that Denver, Colorado... In the states, you know, the states, not regulations, but recommendation, each year a negative balance should be wiped out. And any new payments that a parent makes should be credited towards the subsequent year. And Brewster, they're carrying forward all those negative balances, any payments that we receive, we're applying to those negative balances. And it's not just a Brewster issue, it's a, it's every school district throughout New York State. I shared with the audit committee a NISBA article about the challenges that Denver, Colorado public schools is facing, because they passed a similar legislation, no shaming policy. And over the course of several years, they racked up a significant amount of student debt on school lunches. So NISBA is one of their, one of their goals, and also my professional organization, the New York State Association of School Business Officials, they're requesting that districts provide this data to them on an annual basis for possible amendments of future legislation that will provide relief to school districts to recover those outstanding balances.
You can write that one next year.
Sure.
Okay, good, motion and a second? Yes, so all those in favor? Six, yeah, no opposed? Okay. Motion passes six zero. Number three, approval of budget development calendar.
So I printed out for you a copy of the budget development calendar, it's very small print, I apologize for that, but I wanted to keep it on one page. Couple of things to highlight for next year's budget development. Each year, or starting last year, we began the budget kickoff, really, with our long-range financial planning presentation. That's scheduled for November 12th. Each of the past few board meetings, I provided little snippets of financial information of anything that I learned that is going to be impacting next year's budget. Another printout that I gave to you was basically the compilation of all those comments that I made for administrative remarks. And I just want to memorialize those in the process, and I'm going to start the budget website now, tomorrow after tonight's board meeting, and place that up there, just so we can refer back to it, because, again, oftentimes, we have conversations, and then those conversations seem to get lost over time, and they're a little fuzzy in memory, so I just really wanted to, again, memorialize everything, put it out on paper, so that it's a constant conversation. And again, I cannot stress enough how concerned I am about the 2020 budget and all of the challenges that we're going to be facing. And with that, one of the other changes to the budget development calendar is that we're going to be starting a month earlier. Traditionally, our first budget presentation was at the end of February. This year, we're going to have our first budget presentation in January. We're also going to maintain the budget one-on-one workshops, which I feel were very informative and helpful to our community and our staff members. We had very good turnout at those meetings. And in addition to folks who were actually in attendance, there were actually people who were live streaming on Facebook, and were actually able to track that people were, you know, tuned in at home. So I feel that was very successful, and obviously that, you know, led to a positive outcome of the budget vote. And it's also in keeping with superintendent's goals of improving our budget process.
Okay, motion and a second, please? Glenn and Scott, thank you. Questions or comments? Thank you, Victor. I mean, we continue to improve yearly, and where we were a few years ago to where we are now is huge. And I know that last year, you had said you wanted to even do more.
Absolutely.
In terms of just how we share information, making sure it's just clear, and it can get very wordy.
Yes.
And I guess approachable would be the way to say it. What was my question? So you said people were live streaming themselves, or were we doing that? Because...
Yes, James Flora set us up with livestream on Facebook Live. And I believe there was some other streaming service that we used at one point, but I think Facebook Live was the best one.
Well, for right now, yes. So we're looking at some other streaming services, actually, to be able to possibly stream board meetings as well.
Okay, yeah, no, that would be great. And I think that part of us sharing it in, like, the dates and one-on-ones, but it will be live streamed also. So we may not get a big turnout, but I think it's important to see who's on and how many, because definitely people work and are all over the place, so it's tough. So that would be, that would be a huge improvement. And just to ask, I know it's like on the calendar and the budget one-on-ones, because, again, board meetings get tough, we don't have the exchange that I think was able to happen much better in those one-on-ones. Do you think there's a need for any other type of forum or space? Because budget one-on-ones were kind of informative. Do you feel that they allowed for enough interaction? People to ask questions and to do that, or are there other things that...
Yeah, well, we have some of our budget advisory committee members, and they're nodding their heads in agreement, and I felt so. And it was, you know, as geeky as it sounds, I really enjoyed it. You know, it was important to get information out, because it's very confusing. Oftentimes, what we're doing, even the, you know, the acronyms that we use are confusing, and folks just, you know, don't live in the lingo that we live in each and every day. So to be able to sit down and interact and go over things in detail, I felt was very helpful to, you know, to the budget advisory committee. And then they, in turn, went out and had conversations with, you know, with their friends and relatives and neighbors, that, you know, helped them to, you know, explain things that are confusing. I thought it was great.
Okay.
Victor, you brought in some experts on topics, like I drove down from Albany.
Yes.
To get more information on it. It was really good.
Okay, great, good, thank you. So I'm glad to see you continue to improve it, and I'd like your idea of the ongoing conversation with information. Okay, so all, sorry, all those in favor? Motion passes six zero. Four, designation of chief emergency officer. Glenn Friar.
Yes, this is just a housekeeping item. Each year, the board is required to designate someone as a chief emergency officer who oversees our safety compliance. Andy Bates, our director of facilities, retiring at the end of the month. And Glenn Friar, who is our new director of facilities, will also be replacing him as chief emergency officer.
Okay, thank you. Motion and a second, please? Krista, thank you, and Eric, questions or comments?
Victor, was there any consideration given to giving this responsibility to someone who's already in the district? Or this is really just, it kind of goes with the title of...
It's typical that the director of facilities would be this person, because, you know, ultimately, it's also a facilities-related issue in terms of the building plans and the coordination with all of the different utility companies and first responders and things of that nature, that it's typically the director of facilities that is also designated as chief emergency officer.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six, opposed? That, better than that. Motion passes six zero. Number five, approval of instructional services contracts for A, Carmel Central School District, extended school year, B, Carmel Central School District, school year.
Yes, these are contracts for our special needs students placed at a district. They've been reviewed by our attorneys and recommended by, for approval by Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you. Motion and a second, please? Glenn and Carrie, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six, opposed? Motion passes six zero. Approval of intermunicipal agreements regarding transportation services with A, Carmel Central School District, B, Palm Springs Central School District, and C, the Toronto Public School. You asked, did you?
I just want to acknowledge Mr. Murado and Ms. Mary Smith from our transportation department for coordinating these efforts, so that we're able to share transportation services with these other school districts. And of course, that results in cost avoidance to the participating schools.
Okay, thank you. Motion and a second, please? Krista and Scott, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six, opposed? Motion passes six zero. Number seven, approval of policies, second read, 1510 public participation order meetings, 5681 school safety plans, 5683 evacuation and emergency drills, bomb threats, and thus emergency drills.
Yes, thank you. We submit these three policies for your second read approval. They have been reviewed by our attorneys and recommended by the policy committee. Please note that 7220 and 7222 are not upper approval. We hold them pending review from the policy committee based on feedback from incoming members.
Okay, thank you. Motion and a second, please? Krista and Carrie, thank you. Questions or comments? And just to reiterate, again, 1510, we modified, we had discussion at previous board meeting, that we have amended it to now have a lawful three minutes for the public to communicate information to the board. So that we're going to affect if we're passing, the second read is the final read, and therefore, after tonight, it becomes current policy. Three minutes. Assuming, you know, I'm going to go with it. Okay. I did motion and a second? Great. And all those in favor? Six, opposed? Motion passes six zero. Number eight, approval of memorandum of agreement for substitute teachers' chapter contract extension.
Okay, so this memorandum of agreement reflects culmination of our recent contract negotiations with our substitute teachers bargaining. It is up for approval this evening. I do want to just acknowledge Hopeful McCall, the president of substitute teachers bargaining unit, along with Mr. Carlson, who was present as well during our good faith negotiations.
Thank you. Motion and a second, please? Scott and Eric, thank you. Questions or comments?
I just want to thank Mr. Marington for his work, and also Mr. Carlson for all of the...
Okay, all those in favor? Six, opposed? Motion passes six zero. Number nine, approval of MOA, employee number 2951.
Okay, these two MOAs are good faith gesture on the part of the district with the SDIU and two longstanding highly regarded employees who, to no fault of their own, have had some medical disqualifications, and it ensures that upon their return, their seniority and salary step will be made.
Thank you. Motion and a second, please? Carrie and Glenn, thank you. Questions or comments?
Just one question. Is it, I guess, the sunlight expiration date? How is that date chosen? 2023?
The date at which, the time at which...
Are you able to come back to us?
Exactly.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six, opposed? Motion passes six zero. That was for number nine. I need to do number 10, approval of MOA, employee number 3517. You know, it's shared with us, so I just need a motion and a second. Carrie and Eric, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six, opposed? Zero. Motion passes six zero. Okay, now we move on to the consent agenda. Was there anything that is in here, particularly noted that you wanted to comment on, the consent agenda?
I think you just note and highlight and congratulate a number of retirees, Susan Gavin, along with a number of individuals from the BTA who have put in for their retirement, Cynthia Musso, Rosemary Broome, Frances Lang, Lynn Olson, Harry Ulster, Darian Pasquale, and Ellen Frenk. Congratulations to them. And also a quick note that we look forward to welcoming Dr. Master Chief Michael Campbell to our junior R O T program.
Thank you. Any other motion and a second, please? Carrie, Glenn, thank you. Questions or comments?
I'm very happy to see that we're hiring Master Chief Commander, who is way behind, and it'd be nice to get him some help.
Yes, and while always happy that people choose to move on and retire, and we are also very sad, so, you know, the list is long, and Susan, we are going to be truly lost for a little while without you, because, I mean, you hold so much together, I don't think people realize, so, but we'll talk more about that toward the end.
If we don't approve this, I mean, she can't...
Ask the same thing, say, yeah, sorry. Can't go.
She has been incredible on the workplace, so...
Yeah. Okay, so have a motion and a second? Yes, just all those in favor for the consent agenda? Six, opposed? Zero. Motion passes six zero. We now move on to remarks, public remarks. So any other remarks or comments, questions that the public has, please feel free to come up now, state your name, address the board. Still two minutes on the clock, and, please.
Hi, I'm Stan Callen again. I think that this contract does concern me, the DSS one. I think it's not the first contract that I've seen that we don't have an out, or we don't have any negotiation when something does go bad. And I think it's been a recurring problem. Second thing I wanted to bring up, I was actually going to talk about the Brewster High School Plan, and some bringing fun back to Brewster, like work the community's done about bonfires and painting senior spots, but I think this one, this topic is actually more important. I think that you have 42 days to see what happens with this guy, and you need to have an action plan. So I would say that, you know, figure out what you can do to get Eric Larker in that building, so that they can actually explore, because if 42 days come up, you guys don't have anything, you're going to want to be a stretch to talk to the community about Plan B. The reason why Byer often takes off a site plan, is he takes that off the table, is because they have to go through the town. They have to get things approved, they have to let them know everything that they're doing. Once he closes on that, that responsibility from the town gets drawn back significantly, and he has a lot more rights to do whatever he wants within the heart of our community. So a site plan actually removed the town as well, and it was just not incumbent upon him to be able to meet the requirements of that. Eight years ago, I think there was probably one person here in this, in this room, that was on the board, Susan, you were here, too, so... And there wasn't a, yay, you're gone, I'm like, yay, good for you. I look around, the admins are all different, the parents are all different, the community is different, so we have an entirety, entirely new subset of folks. We also know that our district is growing, whereas when, when Garden Street was closed eight years ago, we were told that our school, our class sizes were getting smaller. That's no longer the case. And so now, we are bursting at the seams, and many of our schools have talked about that previously, and we don't have any other plan of action once Garden Street goes away. The other thing that I wanted to highlight, and I'll say next week, next time when we get three minutes.
Hi, I'm Carrie Bailey. I just have a question for what was said this evening. I think it's wonderful that the high school has a goal set, and one of them is increasing the graduation rate, and having a possible case manager to assist with the ESL students that they're able to graduate. I just would like to have it clarified, who is going to be the case manager? Is this going to be teachers given assigned extra duties? Is it a guidance counselor? Is this going to be a new paid position? I do know, having a senior myself, it is very lengthy, from the whole college application, getting everything together. If it is a paid position, is it something maybe we look into to have guidance counselors that can assist and guide this population, as well giving assistance to other students within the district? It's just something to take a look at. And what is the difference between a case manager and a guidance counselor? And how are they going to be assisting this population to graduate? And could they also be assisting other, you know, populations in the high school as well? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Francine Santos. I have a daughter in the middle school, and so far, tonight, we've talked about reduced student population, we've talked about retirees and budget season, so I feel like this is the best time to bring it up. My seventh graders' fourth class, we have over 30 kids in them. It's a lot. And one of them was an ICT class, which is an inclusion class with a co-taught with a special education teacher. And it kind of blew my mind that, as a special education teacher, I get really passionate about it, because it's just not the right form of education for these kids. Not focusing on my child, but even the other kids. So on that topic, you know, going forward, we're going to be able to have this huge hiring surplus, and I feel like year after year, I sit and I watch the budget, and I push to have it approved, and the class sizes are staying the same and getting worse for some of those bigger grades. Ours has increased by 30 students, so we're up to 280 something, I was told during the open house for the second grade. So if that's just something that we're made aware of, we would always invite you to see. So thank you.
Anyone else have anything you'd like to share? No? Okay. Yeah?
Sorry. I'm Erin Hulbisky. I just want to invite all of you, tomorrow night, we're having a meet the superintendent evening, it's an informal chat session. PTSA's district-wide are putting it on, it's less formal than this, hopefully less, you know, involved, but come say hi to Dr. Van Loon, introduce yourselves, talk about your letter here, kind of like what things are going on. So if you can't come, maybe send somebody who can, so, thank you.
Where?
Oh, at the Wells Middle School in the auditorium, at 7:30.
Thank you. Okay, so seeing that there are no more comments, I will close the public remarks and move on to summary of email communications to the board. And since our last meeting, there were just, as I said earlier, some communications shared from Councilman Barca, and it's been a little quiet otherwise. So we move on to board remarks and community updates. What's going on?
BEF Corvette Raffle is winding down, so please, if you have the opportunity, beef.org, you can buy your tickets. The drawing, I believe, is November 9th, so we just ask everybody, not going to go over again all the great things that the BEF does, but they definitely support the learning and the work that we do outside of the budget, and every dollar goes to the students, so please, if you have the opportunity, go on beef.org and support us with a chance to win a Corvette or a significant cash payout in lieu of a Corvette.
Thank you. Tilly Foster, you went to...
Oh, okay, so Dr. Banlo, Elizabeth Kennedy, and myself attended the mental health seminar over at Tilly Foster, I think it was the BOCs and the West Coast Pundit Council, all school boards put it on. Very informational, started at Tilly Foster. It was nice, because the BOC Center was there preparing food, offering students that were working there, so it was good to see an interaction with them. It was good also to see some of the points that came up in the discussions, where they brought up, one of the districts brought up ruler, which we are, in the process, we do use at this time. Another district brought up something a little technical to me, dialectical behavior therapy, but I guess that sort of translates into what we're doing in the mindfulness room. So we're already sort of on board with what some of these people are discussing. The last big one was the mental health first aid. A local school district had brought that up, and it's not council-related, it's more training for the teachers and the administration people within the district, so that they can look at a student and sort of get a difference between, oh, they're having a bad day, or they're having a great bad day. To be able to get them to go visit counselors, seek help, just something to, an additional eye on the kids, something to help them out this time. It was nice, because it was five minutes from my house, so I was in and out very... I appreciate that Dr. Van Loon stayed up and paid a long period after.
Thank you, Scott. Also, we hired a lot of faculty on the week. How about that?
We actually got one again for this week. Thomas Consolato was selected again this week, so hopefully, the results comes in, I think, tonight or early tomorrow. We'll find if he's won it. It was a close race last time I checked.
Forty, forty-two percent.
Exactly. Big game this Friday, it's their playoff qualifier, so hopefully, anybody can come out and support them. It's a huge game. They're having a great season, and hopefully, they can keep you going.
What else am I missing? That's a, I think, where I had things that were going on.
I have a couple.
Yeah, go ahead.
The Brewster Fair Classic was a couple weekends ago, and as I have to point out, the sports my kids participated in. It was a big event. There was over 1,500 students that participated. The administration, Coach Murado, Coach Stilley, Coach Acquisto, I mean, put on an incredible performance. I know we had received a question a while back on the night said rate increase. We are a member of the New York State Municipal Energy Consortium. Say that three times fast. And they, on our behalf, have sent letters opposing the rate increase, just so we are responding. And last night, I attended, the PTA also put on an event over at Wells. It was a little disturbing, the sex offenders, what every parent needs to know. If you had sat through that class, I mean, you don't want to let your kids out of the house. It was terrifying, but they showed ideas and things to talk about. I don't know if this is something we can look into, additional aid for the counselors or somebody to be able to offer other services for our students and families in the community.
Scott, was it recorded? Do we know that sometimes the presentations are recorded?
Dad, I believe it was not recorded.
That one was not?
And everybody was, I was the only dad there, so it was sort of, they're always pointing out that it's always a male person doing these things. It was a little awkward being in the audience, but it was very informational. They brought in an actual expert who tours the country, and this is what she does, so she had just some wonderful information.
Thank you for attending. I think, I know, in the past, and I don't know what the determining factor was, but sometimes they get recorded and sometimes not, but when they are, we then repost it for parents to be able to view, because, again, some people just can't make it out.
I think it was just, it was so quickly put together, because it's not actually the PTA, it was another informational group that worked on, and sponsored by the PTA itself.
Yeah. I mean, but we know we booked a date and something, so I think that we...
They may not allow it to be taken.
Oh, if we can.
They're private.
Yeah.
Something we've looked into and seen.
And if it is, then, yeah. Just wanted to go over a couple of the comments from earlier, so I'm not sure who here can comment or answer. We were talking about who's presented with the case manager. Who are we thinking would be the case manager?
It's our E and L department.
Within that, and...
Correct. We have bilingual mental health counselor, we have a bilingual school psychologist, we have a bilingual counselor, and then we have three full-time E and L teachers and three part-time, part of their time, they're in the E and L department. So all of them, we have 116 students right now, they would split that caseload with a larger portion going to the guidance counselor, although he would have all of those kids normally under his caseload stuff. This would just be for, like, intensive purposes, to track his NICE, the NICE-TEL testing and the Regents testing, because that's where a lot of the problems come in. Like, how many Regents is, what is the pathway for E and L students? Very similar to what a specialized case manager. So we wouldn't need to hire them.
Okay. I think it'll be interesting to see, you know, how successful and effective it is, and I know we do, we focus on, and we need to, focus on areas of need, but I think, like, you know, Scott mentioned, from a mental health perspective, we never know which kid, I mean, we tend to focus on what stands out, but perhaps there's something in this that we could build on after we go through it and see how it works for other students as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Please. And Liz Kennedy did join, Scott and I, and she was, some of those programs, she was going to be, as we do have some of those programs already, as Scott has said, but we can tap into Liz. She's going to be looking into some of those things as well, so we can watch that.
Let's see. The other, oh, the, you know, it's just a comment about the current, we always know that that seventh grade, our current seventh grade, as its new drop, it's always been a larger grade, and I know that we'll tackle it somehow, but I think that we should look at, we're really pushing the limits of where we are within our policy. It's, I mean, I agree, it's not really an effective place to exist in, so we should try to go really look at that. And noted, I mean, there were other comments about Garden Street, and I think they're, I've noted them for us to be mindful of in the future. And I think that's it. Then, anyone else have any comments from the board? So upcoming meetings, we have, so not this weekend, next weekend, we have, I have the district convention, Dr. Van Loon and Scott, it was just the three of us, right? You got that right? Anyone else wants to go up? You know what's the best? This time?
Where is it?
So that's then, we have the 21st, we have our building tours that you arranged for us. Thank you. We arranged it earlier. We have also the board will be engaging in a training, the 28th, just appeals, we do get occasionally appeals from parents, and we're just going to, we're pretty new board considering, and make sure that we're really compliant and looking at those parent appeals And what else? The 29th will be our next board meeting. I think that's all we have. Of course, you can always email us. I don't think we have executive session tonight.
But just say, next Thursday, is the annual inspection for the NJR OTC, and I know Dr. Van Loon, any of them, none of the members of the board that would like to attend. I mean, it's a beautiful thing to see.
What time, or do you know?
I believe, everything's later this year with Commander Miller. I think it's around 10, 10:15 that parents can go in. All the actual inspection takes on the fleet prior to that, with just the group and the Commander Miller, and then they have a general parade, let's say, I think around 10. I'll try to get the time, and I'll send it out.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we have no executive session. We can adjourn. We just need a motion. Carrie, Krista, all of them in favor, Susan. Motion passes, six to zero. Thank you.
For what?
My children.